All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lackawanna City Council meeting. Glimmerily, we go through the caucus. The caucus is an opportunity for the city council to review and discuss, if necessary, any of the agenda items before the regular meeting where the vote is taken. To that end, the first several agenda items are administrative. So we'll start with the communication from division and departments. Item number three from our city clerk. Request city council approve an ordinance rescinding Chapter 66, 14E, requirement to provide proof of liability insurance when licensing a dog. Any council members have any comments, opinions, discussion on item number three?
Can I ask what would precipitate this type of proposal? Are we finding it hard to have applicants provide proof? Are people not interested in having insurance for their dogs?
In having discussed this with the city clerk, Ms. Chief Squala, when he was here, it requires an additional amount of attention from the city clerk's office. Secondly, ours is apparently or supposedly the only municipality that has that requirement. Thirdly, most homeowners have homeowner's insurance anyways, so their dogs are covered. The only people who are probably are not covered are renters. So then the liability not only falls on them, should there be a dog bite, but it'd probably fall on their landlord. The city might be made a party defendant in a lawsuit, but that could happen for any kind of incident, doesn't have to be just dogs. So overall, it just seems to be an unnecessary step. And what appears to be the trend is if people come in and they don't own homes, they're a renter, or whatever the case may be, and they learn they have to have insurance coverage for their dogs, they don't bother registering their dogs. So then we don't have any record at all. So which is, which is the better of the two? Is it better to have a record of the dog, which some of us believe to be better, or to require everyone to have insurance covering any unfortunate incident where the dog is involved in a fight or, or in a fight with another dog or animal? And the feeling, again, is that it might be better to have the dog registered. And again, ours seems to be the only municipality that doesn't have it. So it would seem that we're, some people are in favor of having a more positive approach by having dogs registered.
Can I also ask, what benefit do residents or the city have for having the city require registration in general? What benefit does the city have, other than just violating the?
Well, there's, there's the inoculations, there, you know, the disease of the dog. I mean, there's a number of dogs, there's, there's in our city code, you can only have so many dogs on any residence. So there's a number of reasons that should require the dog be registered so that the city has knowledge of it. And if there's a call, our police department has a call, you know, whether the dog is appropriately licensed, inoculated, and registered, I think are all important.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I just wanted to point out that the mayor had indicated she's not in favor of this. I'm not so sure I am either.
Is there a reason?
Well, the reasons, you know, I think if you're a homeowner, you're going to have insurance anyway because you're going to protect your home and your property. So it really, it really benefits tenants and those are the types of dog owners that aren't going to bother to get the insurance. And those are the ones that, you know, probably need it the most because if you don't police your dog and injure somebody, there's no recovery. It's not always the landlord that you can go after. You have to prove that the landlord knew that the dog had vicious propensities. So it's, it's, I understand it, it obligates the clerk to do a little bit more paperwork, but I think it serves a legitimate public concern.
Thank you. And one other point is that our, our animal control warden, Foni Katusa, retired from our police department, ran an amnesty program to get dogs registered. And there was a flood of response as a result of that to show exactly the fact that adding additional burdens to, to registration, which would be the primary, I think, focus for our city government, is being thwarted by all these other layers of requirements that, that may not really be necessary or benefit anyone in the long run. Doesn't prevent the city from being named as a party defendant in a lawsuit anyways. Even if the party that the dog caused a problem has insurance. But thank you for your comment, Director Wolf. Anything on your end?
I would just reiterate what the city attorney said. I believe most people that aren't registering their dogs aren't going to register their dogs, whether they have to pay insurance or not. That's what we have found. They're bringing dogs in, some, some houses have more than two, limits to, I believe, in the city. I just think it's going to fall on the landlord more than ever before. The landlord's going to get sued.
But the ultimate danger is if the dog is not properly vaccinated. This way, if, if the people are more inclined to register their dogs, we have, as a city and municipality, better control over the fact that they're inoculated and vaccinated, which is, I think, paramount to owning a pet, a pet dog versus having insurance. The dog's not vaccinated and, and is carrying some kind of disease, that problem to the community is, is more significant than carrying appropriate insurance. And we're better as a city able to control that situation if people are inclined to register instead of being discouraged, because there's another layer of rules and regulations and requirements added on to it. That's, that's the way it appears to me.
Okay, but it's interesting because, okay, so right now, we have kind of a two-pronged thing where A, insurance is required, B, the dog has to be registered. So if we remove the insurance part, now you're left with an uninsured, I'm sorry, unregistered dog, which didn't need to be insured anyways. So we're kind of making it even easier to have an unregistered dog, where the penalty is only having an unregistered dog, not an uninsured and unregistered dog.
So I understand you. How do you make that, how does that make it easier?
How does it make it easier for law?
You, you said.
It makes it easier, so my only penalty as an unregistered dog is that I only have an unregistered dog. I don't have an uninsured and unregistered dog.
So the fines would be cheaper and the penalties would be less.
Right, and then I'm more likely to not keep up with anything else because, hey, I don't need insurance, so no one can tell me that I need to have my dog insured. I can still have a dog, although it's not registered. I'm not looking at penalties that would prevent me from, say, for instance, if I'm liable for my dog biting someone, I can argue, I didn't need insurance because the city rescinded it. I didn't need that. I don't need to protect my liabilities. I don't need to protect my dog. I don't need to protect the, the potential victim. It just, it's less responsibility on the dog owner.
Yeah, well, let me ask you this.
Sure.
Is it easier for a dog owner to register the dog just for purposes of registering and making sure the inoculations are appropriate? Or is it easier for a, a dog owner to first have to secure proper, a proper insurance, register the dog, and pay for the inoculations also?
I guess my response to that would be, as a dog owner, what would be easier for me, of course, not having the insurance and just registering my dog. However, I think as a non-dog owner, I want to know if I get bit by your dog, will I be insured? Or would you be liable for my injuries? Which to me is way more important than whether or not your dog is vaxxed.
I don't understand that, that logic, but anyway.
If someone had a dog that wasn't insured, I would be more concerned on if my child was mauled by that dog. That would be my concern.
Okay. The point that I think you're making is if you're a vet, then you're more comfortable knowing that you may have some financial recourse against the insurance policy. But if the dog is not insured and the dog is not registered, which recourse would you have as someone who's being vetted?
None, the same as an uninsured dog, but at least there's pressure on the city to have dogs that are insured in the event that, God forbid, a dog does bite someone. At least there's some kind of, there's some kind of statute in place that says this is what should have happened, whereas we're not liable as a city to say, we're just going to waive all of the dog insurance across the city.
There's no indication we're liable or not liable in any instance. As you may be aware, if somebody's injured, there's an accident, everyone gets sued.
I get it, but.
That's just the policy.
But there's a paper trail that clearly states that pre-November 7 or November 6, there was an active law that said that your dog needed to be insured, and then post-November 6, the city rescinded.
You're saying that creates a liability?
I, I believe it. I would argue that it does. Whether or not it does is up to the law, but I would argue that it does.
Can you explain that?
Can I explain why the liability would become?
Why, where the liability comes in?
Rescinding, the exact number, number three, rescinding the ordinance of having to provide dog insurance.
Okay, but the city's not okaying to have a vicious rabid dog on your property, right?
Absolutely, that is, that is true. And that's why I guess it would be up to the, the courts to decide on who would be ultimately liable. But if my child was mauled, I would use this as a defense and say, the city didn't require these, this licensing, I'm sorry, insurance, and therefore they should be responsible for some of that.
The city is not exempting a dog owner from having insurance or proper coverage. By not having a requirement for insurance for a dog owner, doesn't, the city's not saying by doing that, that, okay, you know, you can have a vicious dog on you or an uncontrolled dog on your premises. That's not what the city's saying.
But I would argue the opposite and say that if the city is saying that you don't, you need to register your dog, that doesn't mean that I could, doesn't mean that I'm not going to be a responsible dog owner, I still have it vaxxed and still have it inoculated.
We've had enough discussion on this, I think. Let me just use one other example. A more serious situation in New York State is people who drive without all of the insurance, correct?
But it is mandated by the state of New York to always have insurance.
But does everybody have insurance?
But if the state was to remove it.
Question is, does everybody have insurance?
I can't answer that honestly.
I can. I was on a bed for 32 years and they don't. And it doesn't matter. People have been, been summoned and cited on misdemeanor level charges for, for the very reason of not having insurance, aggravated on a license operation as a result of it. And they may have multiple charges of that, and they still drive without insurance, without a license, and knowing that they have multiple tickets that they have to answer to.
But would it be responsible on the state to say, in order to register a car, New York State no longer requires proof of insurance?
That's beyond the discussion.
No, I think, I think you have the noise for that.
New York State, New York State requires any dog over four months to be licensed. That's New York State. But again, going back to the car insurance thing, if you're struck by an uninsured vehicle or, you know, what's your recourse? If that person doesn't have the, the funds to pay for your doctor bills, now you're basically out of luck. And that would be the same thing if a dog doesn't have insurance bite you and they don't have, you can't sue that person because they're not making, they don't have enough money. You have no recourse now. Now your child gets mauled, you're paying all the doctor bills, you're doing everything, you have no recourse. That's all I'm saying. Whether, again, what the council decides, that's up to you guys. I'm just saying, at least there's something in place for that person that gets bit to at least have a chance to recoup some of the lost wages or doctor bills or something like that.
It still boils down to the reality of the situation. You're discouraging and, and people are not going to register their dogs, which is the primary focus of this whole thing, because they have the additional layer of paying for insurance. So they're not going to register the dog and they're not going to get it insured.
Right.
So you're still at the same situation.
You were, I agree.
For whether we passed, whether we had this on the books or we don't have it on the books. So if we want more compliance with registering our dogs, it may be beneficial to not require the insurance. That's all. Simple argument.
Right.
Everyone has a vote, so. Anyone else carry a comment on item number three? Moving on to item number four, from our Commissioner of Public Works. Request city council approve purchase of a Hidstock HDS 9200 hydraulic-driven snowblower for the Cat 926M wheel loader, $78,934. Any comments on that? City council, any questions? Anyone for or against?
I think it'd be outstanding for, especially for the Mayor Rose and the First Ward and the Second Ward, for them to come in with that. You'll see it, as long as people realize that stay off the streets during these storms and don't get your car stuck in the middle of the street, because that's where the problems lie. Or go riding around just to investigate.
Joyriding.
And when there's a driving ban, stay off the street, let them get it cleaned up, and they do an outstanding job.
The only question I have, John.
Yes, sir.
When I saw a picture of this, it, it just looks like a large snowblower that directs the snow onto the side of the street. It doesn't look like it facilitates loading, for instance, if, if this machine were to be, were to be followed by a dump truck or, or something of that, so that you could load the snow directly from the snowblower onto a dump truck and haul the weight. It just seems, it only, like a snowblower blows it onto the sidewalks.
You could, you can direct it any way you want. That was the whole premise of it. If we had, obviously, doing bridges, you would just blow it over the side of the bridge. But you can have, with, with a kitty, have, have an empty dump truck in front of you and blow it into that.
Oh, you can?
Yes. I mean, that's why it took a while after what the city had gone through last year with the snowstorms and the parking and anybody around here went through the same thing. It's more of a thought about it and the, my predecessor, everybody at the garage was looking for models and even the mayor about, even in emergency situations, if we have to get down somewhere, if at an ITech meeting that looks like the state went out and bought one now, they have one, the county's looking at getting something. I mean, there's stuff to be borrowed, but there, when we get hit, we're not the only community that gets hit. So it's something they, they worked on, Chris Druzevic, before he had left, finding something that, that's mobile like that, we can blow snow into the back of a truck and haul it away, back somebody, almost like a paving project.
Excellent.
You know, so hopefully you never have to use it, it's like insurance, right? I hate to bring up insurance.
Don't move.
That can't work.
John, you're saying you're a dog owner?
I know. I love my dog's dog, but I'm not a dog.
Registered or not?
Next item five.
So is this equipment already, like, user-friendly? Is there going to be certain DPW individuals that are going to be?
They'll be worried, is it, they have the equipment operators that operate the payloaders and stuff like that, but obviously, even when they get to it, there's going to be some nervousness, I think, to bring it out and once you get to use it. I think once we get, if we even get some snow, even if it's not overburdened, so if we got an area that we can go use it on, obviously, that's the first thing we talked about, taking the guys down there, practicing in a parking lot, going to the high school and say, hey, we might come over there just to see how far it throws, the truck, you know, just to get familiar on it. It's going to be, it's going to be new for everybody.
Can I ride front seat?
Whatever you want. I'll let you know, you take the other dog, we'll ride.
You guys are good.
All right, anyone else have any legitimate comments on this? Anyone else, all right. Moving on to item number five. Ryan Rizzo, Lackawanna Board of Education, request city council approve Houston City Lackawanna Senior Center and Lackawanna Bochi Court for upcoming school, special Lexis School Board, December 12th, 2023. Anyone have any comments or questions on item number five? If not, there's been a request to waive the rules. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I don't think we have enough information to move forward on this. If we need to take this up, we can take it up at the next council meeting, but that's my feeling. Anyone else have an opinion on that? Request for waiver of the rules and request from the city comptroller.
I agree with you. I think I would feel more comfortable looking more into that request and having it scheduled in our next meeting.
I agree. Anyone else? All right, if not, then we'll formally call the Monday, November 6, 2023 Lackawanna City Council Meeting, order of the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The city clerk, would you take your role, please?
Mahwati, President. Anderson.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Serdike.
Here.
Moranam.
Here.
Law.
Here.
Development.
Acting, here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Comptroller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Public Information. Hearing from citizens.
Faith Gordon. Thank you. I haven't seen you guys in a while. I'd like to speak to you on item number three on the agenda. I'm a multiple dog owner. I also own my own house, so I have insurance. And I think that you should keep this law on the books for a variety of reasons. Lackawanna's municipality is unique in the fact that it has so many absentee landlords that some of our surrounding municipalities don't have. And I think that it's important that we require these people to have runner's insurance on their dogs, many of them which are, I don't want to be breed-specific, but we all know what we're talking about. And it's usually the runner's dogs that are running loose around the street or they're walking in without a leash. I know, because I see that. And if we have a problem with these dogs not being licensed, that falls on the responsibility of our animal control officer, because if he's out there cruising the streets and he sees these animals, he should pull over and question them on the validity of their paperwork. I know that it happens because before I even moved here, I was doing ride-alongs with the Tonawanda Animal Control Officer, and she was very diligent about making sure that she was following up on licensing requirements and driving around. And if there was a leash on the front of a porch or something like this, she'd check her records to see if there was an animal license there. I just think that it's necessary that we have it, mostly because, again, the dogs that are, the majority of the breeds that are being kept in these buildings that are owned by absentee landlords are more of the aggressive type dogs, okay? And they'll say, oh, they're just big babies and stuff like this. Well, I'm not buying it, and I've been showing dogs since 1991, and I see what's going on here, and I know what's running loose. And you should have, I think it's, it's a liability issue. And the fact is that a lot of those buildings that these people live in that own these animals are absentee landlords. Now, you can't get a hold of the landlord anyhow to correct the issues that they have within the city with their property, so why would we give them a break? And the other argument is, well, I live in public housing and I can't afford the runner's insurance. Runner's insurance is really, really not expensive at all. And if you can't afford to have it, you probably can't afford to have your dog. It's the same as going to the vet and getting shots and doing everything that you have to license them. The people that aren't licensing their dogs aren't going to license them anyhow, because that's how they are. And it's up to our council people who are aware, when they're going around into their wards, to, to make note of things. It's up to our animal control officer to stay on top of this, but I think it would be a detriment to remove this law from the books.
You said you have multiple dogs?
I do.
Come in.
I have two.
Okay. Well, we've got two dogs.
I used to have.
Question.
Ten.
For Mr. Wolf. If the animal control officer picks up a dog, dog has no collar, it's got nothing, you know, no, no way of knowing, no chip in it or anything like that, what is the process there? If that person, if somebody does come down to the virus to pick up a dog and he has nothing, what, what happens? Do people get fined?
They'll have to show, they'll have to show proof that the, the dog is registered.
Right.
If there's no, so he'll put it on Facebook or he'll put it wherever he does to see if he's missing. If not, eventually goes to the SPCA. But if an owner does come, they have to show proof that the dog is registered.
And if, if they didn't get proof?
Can't get the dog, or, or he's going to say, you have two days to go get the dog registered. I mean, it takes five minutes to register a dog.
Yeah, well, I mean, if they didn't.
But if they didn't do it from the first time, they're probably not going to do it anyways.
Yeah, so the dog is up.
But most of the time, most of the time, the dogs that are picked up, there's, I mean, it's hot and cold how many dogs are in the pen at one time.
Right.
Sometimes there's two or three dogs, but most of the dogs get picked up by the owners. Majority of the dogs get picked up by the owners. There are a handful of times where no one claims the dog, and I'm guessing that dog was abandoned, and then the dog goes to the SPCA.
I have a question for you. You live in one of the Tonawandas and you went around?
I actually lived here. It was actually even before I lived here, because when I moved here, I had anticipated that I was going to be the animal control officer, and I was doing ride-alongs as training preparation, and then they hired Grasso. But animal control should not be placing any dogs that are picked up with another private individual within the city, and I know that that's happening.
That, that's not the issue. My question, my question is, did you notice a, a large dog problem in the Tonawandas?
No.
Okay, do you know whether they had required insurance?
No, they didn't. This was.
No other municipality does either?
No.
Okay, and has that solved or created a worse dog, dog problem there?
I think that it has a lot to do with the way that things are managed there and how diligent their animal control officer is on keeping up on things. But I think that our situation here in the city of Lackawanna is unique, as I mentioned, that we have so many properties that are absentee landlords. And if we can't handle that agenda or those things with, through our code enforcement department, because these people are out of town, then what recourse is there for anybody if they have a problem with a dog that's living in one of these properties, if they're not required to have insurance? And most of them dogs that are in these properties are not neutered.
Well, that's another issue, but if they're not going to get insurance, and they're not going to register their dog, they're not going to get it vaccinated, if the dog gets picked up, they're not going to claim the dog. If the dog bites somebody, they're certainly not going to claim the dog. So where, how, how does this being on the books help our residents?
How does it not?
I'm asking you, how does it help it?
Well, the ones that are, the people that do carry, and it's not insurance on the dogs, ma'am, the dog is not insured. It's renter's insurance, which covers any liability and culpability for somebody to have some recourse should that individual's dog bite somebody or cause some damage. So, to you, what do you have to do with that?
Can I ask something, Mr. Wolf? I think I asked you this a couple of years ago, when we were talking about dogs. Where do you see all these, I, I drive around the city all day. I don't see dogs running around all over the place. Where do you see all these dogs?
You need to see them? They're on Facebook, because people are posting. They're on Facebook, because people are posting that they found this dog here, it's on electric, people found this dog, it's on Abbott Road, they take it to the.
Somebody from out of town stop when I'm here, but I, I drive by your house.
Everybody shot the car.
Oh, I never see any dogs around.
Well, you know what? Go on the Facebook page for, you know, you're from Lackawanna. I know you don't go on Facebook, but that's where they're all being posted. And if, if they just, they're not returning them, and the procedure should be, if I might continue, please, instead of this, then somebody finding a dog and placing it with somebody else to hold it, which I'll give you that person's name privately, because Tony has been doing some work on the side with her. The dog should go to the holding facility, and you don't get the dog back until it's licensed and you have proof of its inoculations.
Well, we've been through that, all right. We, we know all that, yeah. The problem is trying to get compliance, and, and this, it doesn't seem to be helpful either way. But thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay.
Approved minutes of the regular meeting of October 23rd, 2023.
Ryan moves to adopt minutes of the regular meeting, October 23rd, October 23rd, 2023 is written.
Mavlahe seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Mavlahe, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of October 23rd, 2023 is written. Mavlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Departmental reports, one and two. Receive and file departmental reports, one and two.
Ryan moves to receive or file departmental reports, one and two.
Mavlahe seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Mavlahe, to receive departmental reports, one and two. Mavlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Communications from division department heads. City clerk requests the city council approve the ordinance rescinding chapter 66-14E, requirement to provide proof of liability insurance when licensing a dog.
Ryan moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Mavlahe?
No.
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried four to one. An ordinance amending chapter 66 of the Lackawanna City Code entitled Animals, rescind section 66-14E requiring liability insurance when licensing a dog.
Ryan moves to adopt ordinance is written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance is written. Mavlahe?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried four to one. Commissioner of Public Works requests the city council approve the purchase of a hitchcock HD S 9200 hydraulic-driven snow blower for a Cat 926 M wheel loader, total cost $78,934.
Ryan moves to approve request.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Mavlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yep.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five to zero. Communications from citizens. Ryan Rizzo, Lackawanna Board of Education, request city council approve the use of the Lackawanna Senior Center and Lackawanna Bochi Court for the upcoming school board special election on December 12th, 2023.
Ryan moves to approve request.
Mavlahe, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Mavlahe, to approve request. Mavlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. It was a request for the weight of rules regarding city comptroller's request that the city council approve proposal from Sapphire Business Systems, Inc., to reconcile software and procedural-related deficiencies. The cost is $95 per hour for approximately 150 hours.
I don't, I don't think we should entertain this matter at this time. The city comptroller wishes to resubmit for the next council meeting. I suggest we do that. Any other council members have any comments? I know council member Mavlahe spoke about that. Anyone else have any feelings about that?
I have no problem with this.
With it to deny the request or to waive the rules?
To waive the rules. I think it, I, I have total confidence in this. We were, I was totally briefed on this, and I think it's a must. We need to do this. That's my opinion. We're waiting too long, it's coming here at the end of the year. Everything in the past had to be.
So point, point of order, so we should make a motion and second it, so you can discuss it on the table, just.
Okay.
For Robert's rules, that's all.
All right.
Okay, request waive the rules.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I request to waive the rules for this.
Sure. Is there a second?
Motion by Moretti, second by Serdike, to waive the rules. Mavlahe?
I'm going to vote no, simply because I prefer to have some more time to do my due diligence.
Anderson?
No.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
No.
Carried three to two.
Motion fails three to two.
Motion fails, I'm sorry, three to two.
I don't have any other table items or, or business. Any of the council members we ran?
There was a, a matter at the last meeting on the business registration, they were going to amend their business registration for the vape shop to do the marijuana showcase, and I believe that was tabled. I did email the gentleman that requested it and invited him to come today, but I don't see.
Excuse me, what's up?
I don't see him.
You go, please.
Yeah, I said at the last meeting, we wait, we tabled the matter with the Yeti vape shop, they amended their business license to include a marijuana showcase through one of their, I'll call it vendors, but, or distributors. And I reached out to the man to attend today's meeting, but I don't see him here, so I don't see, if the council wants to entertain that again, or remove it from the table. I did do some initial research, and under the cannabis law, a city may pass a local law and/or regulations governing the time, place, and manner of the operation of licensed adult-use cannabis, retail dispensaries, and/or onsite consumption sites. So, you know, maybe that's something the city should consider at some point, is coming up with a local law that governs hours of operation, where it can be done, and the manner that it's done for both retail dispensaries as well as onsite consumption sites, because I'm sure we're going to get applications.
Is that something you need to propose as far as?
What I would, what I would do is, I will see if other municipalities have a current local law in effect, and we'll get copies of those distributed to the council members so that they can review those. You hear that, Kevin?
Yeah, well, I can hear you now.
All right. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, so for the time being, I don't believe it'd be beneficial for us to remove this from the table, since we don't have any further information to, or requirements to understand exactly what parameters we can set, and we don't have those in front of us right now. So it may have to wait for another, another time. How do you, how do you interpret his, the applicant's not being here today to answer questions or make a presentation?
Right. I don't interpret it one way or the other. You know, for all I know, he didn't see it. I don't know. Maybe the state hasn't given them approval, I, I don't know. I don't know. I'll reach out to him one more time, though, as a courtesy.
I have a question. This gentleman wanted to come in into the city of Lackawanna at Yeti. He wants to bring in growers to display or show off their product?
I think it's one grower.
Okay.
From what I understand, these growers don't have any, the state's been slow in approving retail dispensaries. So this was a, I believe it's a Band-Aid by the state, temporary law that allows them to use vape shops or other facilities to get a temporary permit through the end of the year to showcase their products.
So they're showcasing it for retail or for wholesale?
No, for retail.
Retail.
For retail.
So anybody could walk in there and buy?
Right. But they are there, it's their license, so they have to be there supervising it at the time. By law, everything is, is sold in packaged containers, the price has to be clearly marked, there's some other things that have to be done, no onsite consumption, anyone working there has to be over 18 years of age, and you can't sample it or anything.
And I don't believe there's sufficient parking to do this, number one.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no parking on Abbott Road, so I don't know what this is going to cost. Also, there's a gentleman in West Seneca, by the old, or the Seneca Mall, that's opening up the same thing.
I'm sure they're going to be popping up all over, but yeah.
Mr. Larego.
Yeah.
In his facility, the old bank.
That's right. If I may, council member Serdike mentioned that there might have been a requirement for the applicant to go through the planning board first, and, and also, council member Mavlahe, you may have been right about your understanding about whether or not it was for retail sale versus wholesale sale, which was what I thought it was intended for.
That's if I did.
Yeah, so I, that, that, I'm still confused by it, but it may be, based on what Rick just said, it may be for retail sales, so. That then only acts, acts as a, as a more of a concern for me, as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, we'll, we'll have to take that up again. Rick, how do you propose that this should be?
I'll reach out to the gentleman again, and I'll tell him, you know, if they want to come to the next meeting.
But in the meantime, since the city hasn't opted out of people opening these up, shouldn't the city have a procedure? Do they need to go to the planning board or zoning board? They could do this at an existing vape shop or, or other location?
So the, the state rules are pretty good, actually. I mean, it can't be within 500 feet of a school, you know, the packages have to be sealed, things of that nature. But I will look and see what, you know, I believe West Seneca has a local law.
Yeah, because if we want to regulate the times and the days.
Sure.
Then we need some, some kind of resolution or ordinance to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on that? Okay.
Point of information.
Isn't for the, this is for the public, sorry, Jack.
I know, it's just a point of information.
There's no such thing as a point of information.
There ain't?
No.